Call this meeting to order of the Planning Committee, June 5th, 2023. I believe we have a quorum.
And I'll call the roll. Chairman Wykoff isn't here. Commissioner Gavachi?
Yeah.
Commissioner Dillon?
Here.
Commissioner Noble? Commissioner Connolly?
Here.
Commissioner Marr? Commissioner LaRue?
Here.
Thank you.
So we go on with the roll call. So do we have any public comment? And that would be anything that's not on tonight's agenda, any public comment. Okay, if not, we need to have an approval of the minutes from 5:1. And evidently, we have two sets of minutes in there. So approval of the two sets of minutes for the last two months.
Could we do that separately?
Approval of each one?
Yes.
Yes.
The change, the change on the April minutes was the date. It was marked as the 4th and it should have been the 3rd. So that was the change on the April minutes.
I mean, I wasn't on the board back then, so I'd like to abstain from, from that particular voting that.
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve the April meetings, minutes as they were written?
Motion to approve the April minutes as they were written.
I second it.
Take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Marr?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Commissioner Noble? Sorry, you're not here. Commissioner LaRue?
Yes.
Commissioner Gavachi?
I'd like to abstain.
Okay, that's a, did I miss anybody? Oh, Chairman Dillon.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so if I have a motion to approve the minutes for May of this year.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the May, what day was that, May?
May 1st.
May 1st meeting, minutes of the May 1st meeting.
I'll second it.
I'll call the roll. Commissioner Gavachi?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Commissioner Dillon?
Yes.
Commissioner Marr?
Yes.
Commissioner LaRue?
Okay, so we are moving on to the new business. And we were asked to move the C item, shade structures, up to the first, if that's okay with the board?
Yes.
Do we need to make a vote on that?
Consensus to move it up is, should be sufficient. If there's a consensus. I'm Nancy Meyer. I'm here for Tom Trask, for those of you who have not met before. Consensus to change the agenda direction is all you need to do, just make sure everyone agrees.
Everybody good with changing the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, so we're gonna do the shade structure first. And I believe that is, I can't see who's, who's presenting that.
Okay, I will start. At the Board of Commissioners workshop on May the 24th, there was a public comment that was discussed regarding shade structures in the rear yard. The BOC asked to get an opinion from the Planning Commission on whether the Madeira Beach Code of Ordinances should be amended to allow shade structures like a gazebo or a tiki hut in the rear. And currently, the setback for accessory structures in residential districts is dependent on the zoning district and whether the law is on the water. And this is also seen in your packet on page 53. The R1, single-family residential zones, if you're on the water, the accessory structure must be the same as the principal structure, which is 30 feet. If you're in the R2 zoning district, very similar, but the setback is 25 feet. Many of the homes here in Madeira Beach are built to that rear setback, which leaves no allowable space for an accessory structure on those lots on the water. Temporary shade structures are allowed within the setback. And accessory structures in the commercial zoning districts, except for C1 zoning districts, also require the same rear setback as a principal structure. The allowable size in the code for an accessory structure is smaller than the typical tiki or cheeky hut. Eight feet wide by 10 feet long by eight feet high. And that's for residential zones. The BOC just wanted Planning Commission to discuss this and see what direction y'all would like to take this, if there's any amendment to the code that y'all would like to do.
Okay, is there any discussion from us? Or questions?
We also have Marcy here. She helps with us with the permit review, and she's an engineer as well. So she'll be able to answer any questions as well.
Well, come aboard, Marcy. So the shade structures, are they permanent structures or they're removable, like sheds?
What was discussed at the BOC meeting was more of a permanent accessory structure, like a tiki hut or a gazebo. You can have a temporary shade structure, like a sunshade. So we have seen that as well in our permitting process and discussing with residents. But we have seen a lot of tiki structures that are not allowed, that are put up without any permits. We see that a lot.
So are we trying to reduce the setback requirements or increase the setback requirements for these structures?
It's really up for your discussion. Right now, the setback, like you said, in R1 is 30 feet. And in R2 zoning districts, so these are most of the residential districts in Madeira Beach. It's 25 feet. And most of the homes are built to that setback. So that really doesn't allow any room for a shade structure in your typical residential lot on the water.
Now, being underwater, in some cases, we have to consider whether it's property line or whether it's sea wall setback, so.
Yes, we, we get the rear setback from the outside of the sea wall. That's where we measure the rear setback.
Well, it, it really depends what's on the survey. Sometimes the property lines are in the middle of the sea wall. Sometimes, you know, depending on where the property line is. Sometimes it's also in the, in the middle of the water. You know, somebody could own water 50 feet into the, you know, they can own, yes. So, you know, so that setback could be different than a setback from a sea wall. And typically, sea walls have like dead men, like anchors, it's called dead men. And as long as an engineer can, you know, modify those dead men, then, in my opinion, the building can be as close to the sea wall as possible.
Agreed. And I think kind of where this may head is, right now, the, these structures would be held to the same as the primary structure. I think we'd be challenged then to come up with the primary structure possibly remaining the same, then defining accessory structures that can go, have a different setback qualification, height and size. So I think their goal would be to reasonably allow tiki huts. If that's the direction we want to take, then we would come up with something, exactly to your point about the dead men and engineered, you know, set of plans, clarifying where we would measure the setback from, you know, the water-facing side of the sea wall. Because you are correct, the property line can end up in a couple of different places. So we try to be very consistent with using the water-facing edge of the sea wall. But I think we would look towards having something specific to this request and limiting size, location. The big issue I see, obviously, is when people walk out their backyard and look to the right or left, they expect to have a certain view. Once we do start putting these structures within this area, you know, that's going to be probably some of the big concern that we have to, to think about and take into consideration when we look at this.
I believe I heard in the workshop that there's numerous houses that are under scrutiny at this time. Is that indeed the case?
We get quite a few of code enforcement cases regarding these tiki huts or shade structures in the rear yards.
So what's the city's position when they are in violation?
They must remove it. That's what we enforce right now. Because our code does not allow for a tiki hut or a permanent shade structure.
And at what point is it enforced?
To my knowledge, once code enforcement issues an action, then it typically does the, the life cycle of going before the special magistrate and going into fines or however that's being assessed.
Yeah, and sometimes it doesn't go all the way to special magistrate. Sometimes they'll remove it before it goes to special magistrate, but it's always removed. Because we cannot, we cannot allow it, we, we can't permit it because our code doesn't allow for it currently.
Times if we are concerned about the visibility, we can impose some sort of a visibility triangle at property corners or through the property. If, if the intent is to maintain certain view for the residents, you know, we can impose like a 50 by 25 or, you know, City of Clearwater does 20 by 20, Marcy probably knows that, I'm sure. But there are some municipalities that have a visibility triangle where the structures can stay out of and yet, you know, be able to bring those structures closer to the sea wall or to the property line.
Yes, so trying to allow for a line of sight, kind of limitation on the height and location of roofing and stuff.
Yes.
And the line of sight was also intended for, say, like our fence code, where we don't allow for taller fences in the rear yard. So it was a lot of the intent of the original code and the writing of the code. So I imagine that was a part of the intent for not allowing accessory structures in the rear yards on the water.
So I did a little digging when I was looking at the agenda, and it looked like there were a couple of code sections that were, ordinance sections that were listed. And I think one of the things about potentially changing the code to allow something like this is, like, how much would we have to change to allow it? Because there's a lot of, there's a lot of regulation in terms of, because we're in a coastal high hazard area, as to what you can build, right, along the, and right now, you know, like this section 9442, where it says building structures and facilities exempt, I don't think these kinds of structures, like a gazebo or a cheeky hut or such, are necessarily exempt. So, I don't know, it just seems like there's going to be a lot of definition that would have to go against Florida Building Code, Florida statutes, firm. Like, there's just a lot of regulation just because of, like, where we're located. But I understand too, you know, the reasoning behind it is you want to be able to build something in your backyard, right? I mean, that's, which, to which I would agree, but I, I don't know, I'm a little bit fearful that we're, we can't just be like, oh yeah, you can build a, whatever you, you know, a gazebo or whatever, and then we're just totally going against a lot of different regulations.
So we definitely wouldn't be able to go against the Florida Building Code. That's like the bare minimum requirement that would always be enforced. With our floodplain management, we do have extra criteria that we, we do have and we do meet here. But these structures would still have to be signed and sealed, resist uplift. Anything would have to prevent flotation. So it'd be held to a strong criteria. And we would make sure that we, you know, we would never be able to alleviate any of the requirements of the Florida Building Code.
Yeah, I think we would just have to make sure that that's clear and what kind of accessories we're, we're putting in there. Because my understanding is this isn't, like, these kinds of things that we're talking about are not exempt. They are, they are minor structures. So all, everything, like, even how high they have to be off the ground in some cases would have to be regulated or dictated, you know, what's allowed. And I don't know if anybody wants a gazebo 10 feet off the ground, you know, above their house.
These would definitely be permitted at grade structure.
Yeah.
So you wouldn't have your electricity, you wouldn't have water in them. So that also raises, people like to build these tiki structures, and then the next thing is putting in electricity and having your outdoor kitchen. But we don't allow that since we are in the floodplain. So that would be kind of the, the one thing that we could see, allowing this. And then, then we start getting more people building outdoor structures and kitchens and electricity in these structures. So that's just one thing that we've kind of talked about as well.
And it would have to touch a lot of different parts of the code. You're correct, we'd have to go through and, you know, for consistency and clarification, but yes.
Do we have any definition for ancillary accessory use in the code?
Yes, we have, I can pull it up. We have accessory, it gets accessory structure that we have.
Like definition for minor structures, major structures.
So we have structure, the definition of structure. And then it goes into major structures, sure, houses, mobile homes, apartment buildings, condos, motels, hotels, restaurants, towers, and other types of residential, commercial or public buildings and other construction. And we have minor structures. It's walkovers, ramps, walkways, stairways, platforms, gazebos. So this would be like a minor structure, good, a shade structure, and boardwalks, bathhouses, sidewalks, driveways, parking areas, and it goes on. Ornamental garden structures. So this would definitely be a minor structure, is, is what we're looking, what this would be addressing.
Well, I'm seeing that the gazebos are kind of compiled with sidewalks. I mean, to me, sidewalk is not a structure. So gazebo is, I mean, I could understand gazebo could be a minor structure, but not, not sidewalks. And some of the items that are listed, you know, bathhouses, obviously, are also not minor structures, in my opinion, because it would have to, in case, in some, most cases, it'd have to meet FEMA and have to be above flood zone. So we may want to redefine what we mean by minor structure before we can address the setback requirements.
I have a question. On the cheeky huts, most of them exceed eight foot in height. The second thing is, I've been told, and correct me if I'm wrong, that if you hire Indians, I'm using that as native Seminole, and there's another tribe, if you hire them under the Floridale Law, there is no code for them. In other words, if they come out and put up a structure, and you have their letterhead that nothing in the city, the building department doesn't have any say about that.
That's with the building codes, it doesn't exempt them from the zoning. So they would still have to meet the zoning requirements, which would be the size and the location.
Okay. Because then I questioned, you know, because I have somebody that has one. And I was very fearful to have a fire pit for the simple reason you got a thatched roof. And then I was informed afterwards that there are some people that put these up that have no affiliation with the Indian nations. The Indian nations take the thatch and they soak it in some kind of chemical where it's fire retardant. Because I often wondered, the hut, that used to be the hut, now it's Caddy's in John's Pass. You know, they hate that building on the inside in the wintertime with gas. And I'm going, boy, if that ever caught on fire, we'd have a nightmare. So I kind of asked a lot of questions because I was concerned, you know. And then I'm saying to myself, there's a thatched roof, you know, somebody shoots off fireworks. And of course, that hot ember comes down and it lands on the roof. But then they told me that it's fire retardant, so.
I think that happens a lot. People put, put up the traditional cheeky huts thinking that they don't need permits. But in our code, we do require it for zoning.
Okay.
Exactly. So that happens quite, quite a bit. And then code enforcement has to go out there, and then they have to take out the structure. It's a long process.
My next question is, if you can't, I mean, 30 feet, I can get in my boat and I can go up and down these and find a lot of people that have maybe 15 feet to the water. So how are those people going to ever be able to put up any kind of structure? I guess they're not, okay?
Right now, how the code's written, they're not.
Now, can somebody put up what is known as a sunsetter? I'm sure you've seen the ads where they attach it to the fascia on the house, and they're retractable, they can be automated as to electric, with electric motors, or you can do it by hand?
If it's temporary, we allow the temporary.
But it's not temporary, it's on the house.
It's meaning the requirement.
So that would be permissible if you didn't have the 30 feet that you're asking or you have written into code now?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so there's, there's an option.
An option.
Thank you.
I would say that's permanent temporary, because it's permanent on the structure, but it temporarily goes out for the shade.
Yeah, it's also on the principal structure. So we're just talking about detached, separated, right? But you're saying there's kind of a, like a precedent, so to speak, of something that can extend away from the principal structure within that space, yeah.
So that could be allowed where nothing was allowed before.
But it's a temporary, it's not, you're not building with a...
It's fixed to the house.
Correct. But it doesn't have a post, like a, a permanent structure that it's also, from what I understand, from your description.
You have posts that come down, but those posts, when you retract, those up.
They can retract, yeah.
Yeah.
Then we would consider that like a temporary. It's not, the posts aren't permanent in the ground.
So I guess, to me, I think we agree that there's a, whatever, if, if something were like, like this were to be allowed, there'd have to be a lot of, like, definition and language and very strict requirements to, to do this for a variety of reasons. But on the whole, do you, I guess I would ask the question, do y'all want to allow for structures to be, just forget about the code and everything, just the idea of allowing structures, allowing someone to build something in their backyard for a line of sight reasons, for whatever reason. I think if we can agree there or disagree there, then they can kind of start to develop something that would, you know, govern that. Does that make sense? So.
Well, but you've got a lot of people that already have illegal structures in place.
Yeah.
So it's, I think, going to be a matter of the city, you know, following the ordinance and following the guidelines and not allowing it. Or your grandfather those in and/or allow it. I mean, but then, then you're going to start getting into line of sight issues. And that's where I believe the issue came up, is somebody had put in a structure and their neighbor says, oh my God, I can't see my water anymore. Because you've got this huge structure in their property, even though it's their property, but it cuts out your line of sight. And also, I guess, it was done not permitted.
How about this? Because you have so many different setbacks that to make up some kind of graft, that if the house was, let's say, 40 feet wide, and you started in the center, and you did some kind of math as to how far the wall is, and then you worked in those confinements. So in other words, if you had a 30-foot house, you'd work in those, the 30 feet by 30 feet out, and you'd do it on a triangle, and you would do it in the center of the house. So this way, rather than stick it out there where Mr. Smith can't look at his water. But it would have to be computed so it would fall into place for everybody.
Well, see, we also, we've got different ordinances for water views and for non-water views. And in terms of if, if you don't have a water view, you know, your next door neighbor, your neighbor behind you, are you really going to affect their view? And that's why I was just looking to see the differences. And we do have different requirements for water, which I'm not sure where you get with 15 foot, that the buildings are 15 foot off the water?
I could show you, oh my God. I've gone by him in the boat, and it may be a little bit further than this podium. The back door, and then, I mean, they're like, whoa. And you say to yourself, how could they live there when it gets high tide and floods? I mean, it's got to be in their house. There's just no way.
Well, I guess, do we have many of those that you guys are aware of?
We have a lot of legally non-conforming structures, meaning homes that were built before the zoning code was put into place. So we have a lot of tight, smaller lots that are also legally non-conforming, that that have legally non-conforming structures that don't currently meet the setbacks. We see it all the time.
Look at all the houses next to the Coast Guard station.
A lot of the homes here are legally non-conforming. They were just built before this current zoning codes.
So if the, let's say, let's say we were to move forward with, you know, the, maybe whatever, cause they're looking for a recommendation, right? So if the recommendation was to explore code or whatever it would be, would anything to, what you were saying about kinda grandfathering in, how does that work with non-compliant, existing non-compliant structures? If, if they became non-compliant, or, you know what I mean? If they became non-compliant after we approved something in the future?
Yeah, so that would be legally non-conforming structures.
So just like those houses, they would be allowed to remain technically if they've already been approved, but anything moving forward would be?
I don't think that it, I don't think our code currently discusses accessory structures as legally non-conforming structures. I don't think it's in that section. I'd have to take a look. But the other thing that, that we would be concerned about is how these structures were built, since they don't have any permits. And their accessory structures are not a home, they haven't been there, well, some of them have not been there for that long. So that would just be another thing that we would have to discuss and, and see how we would go about that.
If they're damaged by, let's say, a storm, they'll have to bring it to today's code.
That's correct, yeah.
But we have to honor it. It was permitted legally conforming.
But they're saying it's not necessarily permitted. And if it, it wouldn't have been permitted because it wasn't legal at any time.
So then we don't know how they were put up. If there's a storm or, you know, you go into your neighbor's lot, I don't, there's just a lot of, of things that we would have to discuss and bring, bring back.
But the non-permitted structure is specifically a cheeky hut, right? That's the only one that would technically be not permitted at this time if it were built by a tribal nation, right?
They would still need to go through planning and zoning to look at the location. So that would still have to go through us. So I think a lot, a lot of people will put up a cheeky hut, not knowing that they had to get a permit through planning and zoning, not the building department, but through planning and zoning, for the size and location. So we see a lot of those, and then they have to remove them from their property.
Building department can't approve projects without it going through zoning?
No, it has to go through zoning. But for cheeky, for, for the tradi- traditional cheeky hut, uh, that doesn't have to be approved through building.
Well, then a building department need to send, needs to send that to zoning department?
Yes, zoning has to approve it or review it.
Yeah, but with these, nothing was ever submitted in the workflow, so it wasn't approved by building nor planning and zoning.
Yeah.
Do we have any more discussion here?
Do we, do we have to come to a, like an agreed upon recommendation? Is that what they asked us for, or?
There's gonna be some public discussion, possibly.
Okay.
And then, then the city comes back and then we come back with, I guess, a vote on it.
We could workshop this again if, if you'd like, um, just to get more, more input. And we can explore the vision triangles, um, in some language with that, and see if other cities have done that as well.
Could we also, like, explore the code overlapping and just to, you know, where?
All the areas that we would have to change.
Touch, what would it change and?
Absolutely.
How this, talking about the definite, I think the definition is a little bit rocky and up for interpretation.
Are very broad and haven't been touched in a very long time, especially that section.
I feel like that's gonna be such a big piece to it. But if we can ex, if that can also be explored, just like digging into the, all that overlap. Cause personally, I feel like I see like a lot of like small things that just cause hiccups to allowing something like this.
Okay, we can definitely look at that and bring it back.
So would that be a workshop, a general workshop, our workshop, or?
That would just come to a planning, the next planning commission, um, and then we would have a discussion just like this about that.
Okay. Well, do we have any public comment on this before we?
Hi, everybody. Jim Ross Tech. My address is protected. I'm retired public safety. Just a couple points I'd like you to ponder. First thing is, there's a ton of these structures out there. After I was notified by a neighbor of their condundrum that they're in, I went out riding around on the boat. Good, good way to get out there. And there's a ton of these structures, a ton. So it's gonna have to be addressed somehow. I just don't know what that is. The line of sight issue that you brought up, I do believe there was an ordinance passed about landscaping within the last year or two, that you can take trees and shrubs all the way down the property line? Or, I, I, I don't know exactly how that reads, but what I'd like you to ponder is, if you can do that with trees and shrubs, what's the difference with some type of a structure? The setback is going to be an issue. It is what it is there, that I, we live in an area. Obviously, the UV is very high, people like to be outside. They don't wanna be exposed to the sun so much because of the potential for skin cancer, and I'd just like you to ponder that also. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, yeah, very true. Yeah, yes.
Hello. So a lot of what I'm gonna say has kind of already been discussed over the last half hour, but I'm just gonna go for it and we can discuss. Um, so I'm Christina Alton. My husband and I are the owners of five four four Johns Pass Avenue. We're here to discuss the changing of the plan permissions for a permanent shade structures here in Madeira Beach. It's very important to us and our neighbors. Currently, most residents who live on the water are unable to create a form of permanent shade in their backyard. As the permit requirement state, as you guys have discussed, a, any cheeky hut or similar structure can't be erected within thirty feet of our seawall. Uh, these current setbacks are unreasonable, and we would like for you to consider making that change to reduce those setbacks, setbacks for future builds. Cause Ebo's, Tiki's, Pergolas are currently classified as an accessory structure, and that's kind of the same as a shed, and we want that to be redefined, which is also what we, we've discussed. We've had many large umbrellas in our backyard, and they simply do not create the kind of shade a cheeky hut does. There are currently, as have been mentioned, about twenty-eight plus existing structures. I have pictures of them here. Um, I also went on our boat and identified them. That technically violates setback laws, and we admittedly are one of those twenty-eight structures. One of the main reasons we built our Native American Musookie tribe tiki was that I have some physical limitations which prevent me from being able to walk on the beach and swim in the Gulf. So, um, in twenty twenty-two, we completed a total remodel of our backyard, which included a new pole, new pool raising our deck, so I didn't have to walk down the stairs from our house. It was permitted and approved. And, uh, building the tiki so that we could sit out there. Um, I will say my quality of life has improved tremendously in the last six months. I've spent more time in my backyard in the last six months than I have in ten years of living there, just because of having that shade that an umbrella or any other kind of shade just doesn't provide. Um, if you've ever been underneath a cheeky hut, it actually is ten degrees cooler under there because of the, the structure itself has a higher peak and it promotes air. It's imperative that we can provide a way to protect ourselves from this intense heat. We've spoken to several of our surrounding neighbors, and they would like to have the option for shade as well. Um, if we can redefine what that looks like, rather than letting people take the risk of building without parameters, we know that we'll have a happier community. We're ready to have a petition. We have a petition kind of set up, ready to distribute if we could get that, if you guys would like to see that support, um, but we're just waiting for your direction. So I thank you for that. Thank you for your time. Would anybody like this set of pictures?
I don't know whether this is right, but you said you got, you, you had it permitted last year?
No, no, we didn't. No, we went, I, we went through a process. And our neighbor is the one that complained about the view, so, and then they built, they put up about seventy thousand dollars worth of palm trees that blocked their own view. And I, like the tiki, you can see right through it. They have a second story, like you can see right through our tiki. It does not block their view. So, anyway, thank you.
See, and that's like, yes, I mean, in terms of, I believe, something that we could look at is if, if we would allow the, some of them, allow grandfather in, but only if they would be inspected and would be, meet standards, I guess. What I would, what I would say would be the only way they could be grandfathered in.
You just opened up Pandora's box.
You're right, we'd be taking liability from that point on, if, you know. But you know, view, I mean.
If I may, procedurally, over this way, the other, the other way. Procedurally, since you've had your conversation and took public comment, I think it's been decided they're gonna come back. It might be best now to let it come back with their additional information and then have additional discussion. You, you don't have to listen to me, it's just my recommendation, that you let it, let them come back and continue it next time and, and, and do that, since you had public comment already.
Okay. So then with that, we'll move on to the next item. Which, there was a correction, densities and intensities are supposed to go under the administration presentation. So we're gonna go to A and vote on the first vice chair. So do I have any? Who's gonna go for first vice chair? Do I have any nominations?
I nominate you.
Second.
Okay, so if I'm nominated as first chair, and, okay, so, yes, I do accept the nomination of first chair. But with that, we'll also need to nominate a person for second chair, which is a position that I was sitting in beforehand. So do we have a nomination for somebody in the second chair?
Would that have to be for next month? Because it's not on the agenda today for second chair.
It's not on the agenda for tonight.
Only first vice chair is on the agenda for today.
Okay. Okay. So that'll, okay, so that'll move to next month. Okay, so then, item D?
Hold on, you'd have a vote. You have to see if they, I know, I knew two people have already said your name, but they have to, need a majority.
Okay, so do we have, yes, a vote for?
I nominate Chuck Dillon for first chair.
Second.
I'm sorry, who is the second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. So, um, Commissioner Dillon?
Yes.
Commissioner Marr?
Yes.
Commissioner LaRue?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
And Commissioner Gavahy?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Dillon.
Okay, thank you, I guess. Okay, so now we're going to go to the, the change for next month's meeting. Instead of being on seven ten, it's gonna go, no, from seven three to seven ten. So instead of the day before, Fourth of July, it's gonna be on the tenth of July. Is that okay with everybody's? I mean, I guess, do I have to have a vote on this?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to change next month's meeting from July third to July tenth?
So moved.
Second.
I'm sorry, who was second?
I was.
Commissioner Gavahy?
Yes.
Commissioner Marr?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Commissioner Dillon?
Yes.
Commissioner LaRue?
Yes.
It passes.
So we're moving next month's meeting to July tenth. Now, old business. Do we have any old business to discuss? Okay, then we're gonna go on to the administrative staff presentation, which is the densities and intensities.
Okay. So tonight we'll be discussing the consistency between Ford Penellas's countywide plan with our local comprehensive plan and our land development regulations. We are currently inconsistent with Ford Penellas and have outlined a solution to move forward, which will require amending the comprehensive plan as well as the land development regulations. Please stop me if there's anything that's unclear, has a lot of layers. Yes.
Sorry. I know we must become consistent with the Penellas County Comprehensive Land Use Plan, but not necessarily zoning and land development plan. We can have our own land development plan inconsistent with the county, but the land use should be consistent.
Yes, so we'll be talking about the land use, and the land use is inconsistent. It's, we currently allow something that's higher, less restrictive than what Ford Penellas's land use for us is.
Can I clarify something? Our zoning can be more restrictive than the county's future land use, but it can't be less restrictive than the county's future land use. And the issue is our zoning is less restrictive.
So throughout this presentation, I've included the Ford Penellas logo as well as the Madeira Beach logo. Try to make this a little bit more clear, because we'll be going back and forth between the intensities and densities of both, both plans. And we'll only be focusing on the consistencies in relationship with Ford Penellas and our local comprehensive plan and land development regulations. The easiest way that I like to imagine this is a pyramid with Ford Penellas at the top, and then our comprehensive plan underneath this. Our comprehensive plan as well as our land development regulations must be consistent with the countywide plan. We can be more restrictive, just like Andrew was saying, we can be more restrictive, but cannot be less restrictive. And this relationship follows down through the comprehensive plan and then our code of ordinances. With the county, they have the countywide plan, which consists of the countywide rules, the countywide plan's strategies, and then the countywide plan map. In our comprehensive plan, we'll be only focusing on the future land use element. This tells you the basics of, of the land use, your intensities and densities. It's, it's pretty broad. Um, and then we have the future land use map. And then, in the Madeira Beach Code of Ordinances, this is where we have the land development regulations, like what we were discussing tonight about the accessory structures, the setbacks, all those kind of nitty gritty things of planning. So that's, that's like the code, that's what we reference, that's what we talk about a lot at these planning commission meetings. So we'll be focusing on the land development regulations within the code of ordinances, as well as showing the So we'll be focusing on the land development regulations within the Code of Ordinances, as well as showing the zoning map. So in this part, we'll really be focusing on the consistency with the countywide plan and our comprehensive plan. So on the left of this slide, this is the countywide plan map. And then on the right side is our future land use map, which is in our comprehensive plan. So the areas that we are inconsistent is a resort for the countywide plan map, the category, which is equivalent to our resort facilities medium, that is on the west side of Gulf Boulevard. And then we'll also be looking at the countywide category of retail services, that's in red. You can also see that in our local future land use map, that is residential office retail and, and commercial general. So that's on the east side of Gulf Boulevard, and then there's a little piece up by Publix in that area. There are a few terms that I will continuously use throughout this presentation, units per acre and FAR, floor area ratio. Units per acre is pretty self-explanatory. If you have half an acre with a land use at ten units per acre, you could get five units. And the easiest way to explain the floor area ratio, the FAR, is the ratio between enclosed or air-conditioned space to the land. So if you have an FAR of point-five, that means roughly that half of the land would be taken up with a one-story enclosed building. But it's a little, if you look at our definition, it, it's a little more complicated than that, but that's just a general idea of FAR.
I'm sorry, did you say air-conditioned area or gross, gross area?
Oh, I was just saying, imagine that it's, it is gross, but our definition's a little, a little more nuanced than that. So just for a very broad, imagine the air-conditioned area. So the county measures their intensities and densities slightly different than we do locally. For non-residential, they're strictly looking at the floor area ratio. Residential, it's units per acre or FAR, if permitted by the category. Public schools are, are allowed in some resi, in residential areas, so that's where they'd be looking at the FAR. The temporary lodging is units per acre or non-residential FAR, or units per acre and FAR with alternative temporary lodging use standards, which is inclusive of the garages FAR. Typically, we do not count that in the FAR. And then mixed use is a combination of residential and non-residential density and intensity standards allocated to their respective proportion, or all-inclusive FAR. Now locally, so this is a little different than the county's. We measure commercial, just FAR. Residential, we measure units per acre and FAR. The temporary lodging, we also measure units per acre and FAR. And then the mixed use is a combination of the residential and temporary lodging and commercial density and intensity standards allocated to their respective proportion. Now comparing the countywide plan map categories with our comprehensive land use categories, there are some areas that we are inconsistent. That is the areas that we discussed when we had the maps up on the slide. So we have the resort and retail and services. The resort is also our resort facilities medium. And then the retail and services is our residential office retail and our commercial general. If you just look at these tables, you can see that the area that's in that yellow box, that's where we're inconsistent. That we are higher than what the county allows. So we can be more restrictive, but cannot be less restrictive, which is what is happening here. And the countywide rules includes these alternative temporary lodging use standards. These standards allow for higher units per acre and FAR, depending on the land use category. The community must adopt these standards in their comprehensive plan and land development regulations. And for someone to use these higher standards, there must be an approved development agreement. Jenny has to go to the Planning Commission, as well as the BOC. And here's a snapshot of the alternative temporary lodging use standards with the county. Our current, current standards fit within these allowances. And remember, we can be more restrictive, but not less restrictive than, than the county. So a little bit of history. The comprehensive plan was amended in 2007 to mirror the alternative temporary lodging provision, but the city incorrectly applied them to the entire commercial, general, retail, office, residential, and resort facilities medium area. And in 2008, the city amended the land development regulations to include the alternative temporary lodging use standards, but did not provide standards given by right, meaning what you could do without going through the development agreement process. So if we look at the actual Madeira Beach Comprehensive Plan, the language, it does not clarify the temporary lodging density and higher FAR is only allowed with a development agreement. And the resort facilities medium, it, it kind of goes over it, saying that is provided in the city's, shall be set forth in a development agreement as provided in the city's land development regulations. But if you look up at commercial, general, and residential office retail, is not referenced as development agreement and what you could, what your units per acre or floor area ratio could be if you don't go through that development agreement process, using those higher alternative temporary lodging use standards.
Jenny?
Yes.
Are, are those our current in-place ones?
Yes, they are. And they are also in your packet. Let me tell you the page number, if you want to take a look at it.
I've been, I've, I've been following along with it.
You're good?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I just, I didn't know, 'cause a lot of the ones where you have to square off is where we're in-compliant. So those are ours for the red and the green areas.
Yes, it's just kind of highlighting what, what it says right now. So it says a temporary lodging, for commercial, general, temporary lodging density of up to sixty units per acre with a maximum FAR of one-point-two. And those standards are higher than what the county allows, just by right. Those standards are allowed if you go with the alternative temporary lodging use standards. If you get a development agreement, you could potentially go up to that. But it's not clearly just outlined in our comprehensive plan or our land development regulations.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
The R-one section is basically residential, urban.
Yes, we're not touching the R-one. We're only talking about the C-three, C-four, and R-three areas. So the commercial areas, imagine all the, just along Gulf Boulevard, you're looking on both sides. Those, that's where we're inconsistent. And then over here by, by Publix, that area as well.
'Cause I wanna know if it's rural, residential rural, how is it acceptable? I guess it is under the temporary residential density of A, B, and B?
The temporary lodging use, here, let me go to, this is the alternative temporary lodging use standards. So we're talking about like hotels. That's, that's really the only use that we're inconsistent there.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. So the solution going forward with the comprehensive plan, we don't want to create any non-conforming properties. We must be consistent with the countywide plan. So to be consistent with the countywide plan, we'll need to clarify and reduce the temporary lodging, units per acre, and FAR by right, and what you can get without going with a development agreement. Clarify that the development agreement requirement for alternative temporary lodging use standards. Clarify the FAR is only for commercial use, not residential or temporary lodging. Clarify the FAR is only calculated for temporary lodging when using the alternative temporary lodging use standards. So part two, we'll be looking at the countywide plan, the comprehensive plan, and the land development regulations. Looks very similar than, to what we just went over. So here on the left, we have the countywide plan map outlining the resort and retail services areas. And the local zoning map. The resort is equivalent to that R-three, that's on the west side of Gulf Boulevard. And then the retail services is red in the countywide plan map. And that's equivalent to our C-three and C-four zoning districts, which are to the east of Gulf Boulevard, as well as Publix in that area. And this looks very similar as well. Just comparing the countywide plan map categories, their units per acre, and their floor area ratio with ours, and where we're inconsistent is very similar. It's with the temporary lodging, the units per acre, and the floor area ratio. As you can see, we allow a higher density and higher intensity than what the, the county allows currently. So the solution for the land development regulations sounds very similar to the comprehensive plan. We don't want to create any non-conforming properties. We must be consistent with the countywide plan. To be consistent, we need to clarify and reduce the temporary lodging units per acre and floor area ratio by right. Clarify the development agreement requirement for alternative temporary lodging use standards. Clarify the FAR is only for commercial use, not residential or temporary lodging. Clarify the FAR is only calculated for temporary lodging when using the alternative temporary lodging use standards. And the next steps, we're here at the Planning Commission. And the next, the next thing will be a public workshop on June seventeenth, that's Saturday, from ten to twelve. And then we will bring that to the BOC workshop. And the slide that's up here is, is not updated. We're aiming for, for June to gather all the input from the planning, from the public workshop, and any input from here tonight, and bring that to the BOC as a workshop. And then we will also get Ford Pinellas's recommendation after our BOC workshop. And then that will come to Planning Commission for recommendation to BOC. And from there, it goes to BOC for the first reading and public hearing. And then, since we will be amending the comprehensive plan, it has to go to the state, the DEO, and all the statewide agencies to get their recommendations. And, and then from there, we'll bring it back to BOC for the second reading, public hearing, and adoption.
Thank you for that, Jenny. Is there any discussion or questions for Jenny?
Yes. Are we going to assume that Ford Pinellas land use is consistent with the state? We're gonna, are we gonna assume that automatically, or are we going to make sure that, 'cause there are some inconsistencies between Ford Pinellas and the state? So how do you?
We have to be consistent with Ford Pinellas. Are you talking about the intensities and densities, or is there?
Well, density, intensity is a function of land use. So, you know, I mean, if, I mean, if we're just gonna follow Ford Pinellas, then that's, that's fine. But I, I would probably just wanna double-check to make sure they're consistent with the county, with the state.
I mean, this, DEO has to review it, and they see, when we send the package to DEO, they have Ford Pinellas's letter supporting the amendment. So they see what, what's being proposed. So if there, if we get, when we get the letter back from DEO and they say it's fine, then, then it's fine. I mean, that's how.
And we send it out to all the statewide agencies, and they provide a recommendation as well to us.
That would be prior to the BOC approving?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, okay.
I have numerous questions.
Sure.
'Cause I was at the workshop. So basically, so let's go back to the countywide plan map category and our future use map category, which was after the densities.
This one?
Yep, the next page. So, so the squared areas are where we're in, uncompliant with the county?
Yes.
So in other words, we have to bring those numbers down to where the county is acceptance?
Yes, that's correct. So, like our residential office retail, right now, it's forty-five units per acre. We need to reduce that to forty. Same for commercial, general, it's sixty currently. That'll have to be reduced to forty. That goes for our FAR as well. Those will have to be reduced.
Okay, and I believe this is gonna make a lot of people very happy about the Johns Pass Village FARs, because they were all up in arms about how high the numbers were.
Well, the Johns Pass Village would still be, well, if it gets adopted, it would be an activity center land use designation. So it would be a completely different land use than these land uses.
So this wouldn't do a map change amendment. This is basically updating our comp plan, how, with these existing categories, and then updating what the existing zoning categories say in a separate ordinance for LDRs. So there's no map change amendment with, with what's, with this. So it's mostly just cleanup, 'cause we partially had adopted alternative temporary lodging use standards, but not.
It just wasn't clear in the code, and it wasn't done correctly. So we're just basically going back, clearing up the code, making sure that we're consistent, and it's, it's clear how we're consistent.
Are we still good with having the two different categories, residential office and commercial, general, as opposed to their single category?
Yes, we're not, we're not suggesting to change, let me go back to the map. We're not suggesting to change any of the future land use areas. To keep that exactly where it is right now, we're just reducing those by right allowances for temporary lodging uses to be consistent with Ford Pinellas. We're not suggesting to change or consolidate any land uses. These are, those are slightly different.
Well, but, but we've got one is eighteen, residential office is eighteen, and the commercial is fifteen. They want twenty-four to be compliant, so.
That's what they allow. So we can't go above twenty-four, but we can go lower than twenty-four.
So we could change that to eighteen and fifteen and be compliant?
It's currently eighteen and fifteen.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right, yeah. No, I was looking, I was looking at forty-five and sixty, so those have to go to forty.
Those will have to go to forty.
Right, okay. Right, okay.
But then with the alternative temporary lodging use standards, if you get a development agreement, then you can go back up to the 45 or 60.
With special, yeah, special.
It's almost like a bonus. Imagine it as a bonus.
Yeah. And that would have to go through us first and then the board of commissions or two offices there too. Okay. And I think that's something that the people, you know, if you show them what, here's what we're looking to do and here's, you know, it's kind of like KISS principle, keep it simple, stupid. And so like, we're doing this to be compliant and it's gonna benefit residents, not necessarily businesses or developments.
We have to be compliant. So that's, I would say that's the number one thing. With the development agreement, like the bonus, where you can get up to a higher units per acre and floor area ratio, it would have to go to Planning Commission, it'd have to go to BOC. So then you get more public input since they're public meetings.
Okay. And then in the zoning category, which is, so similarly there, the C3, C4 have to go down to 40.
Yes.
And the FARs have to go down to .55.
Yes.
And as I see the one, the, the simple one is 45, so it'd be 45 compared to 1, 60 compared to 1.5. So that would be compliant as it is right now.
Not exactly. So the 45, 60, and 75 in the R3, those are dependent on the lot size. It looks very similar to, to this. I think this is kind of where, in the past, where they got these numbers. It's less than one acre, you can have that 45. And then an acre, is it an acre to three acres? You can have this, the 60, anything over three acres is 75. So that's kind of where that sliding scale comes from. That's why you have three numbers right there.
Okay, thank you. And one other, on the first page, 13, you talk about the, the net and the off floor area ratios divided by gross land area to net areas. And so does that really refer to the areas where they have property on the beach and they own the beach, but yet they can't build on it? So is that where the floor area ratio gets, is gonna be cleaned up?
We could look at the definition of floor area ratio, like I was saying before, when Commissioner Gavahy was talking about the air-conditioned area. It's a little more nuanced than that in our codes. It goes more into the nitty-gritty of like the gross floor area, what's included, what's not included in there. Anything past the CCCL is considered preservation area. And that preservation area has, I think it's a .1 FAR. And then you also can't, you can't use that for, for your building. So in that case, like in the R3 zoning and in the resort facilities medium, you wouldn't be able to use that.
And then what's the FLU, FLU?
Future land use.
Ah, okay.
Element in future land use map. So that's just referring to our comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Ian. Any more questions?
Yes. Temporary lodging, does that include overnight accommodation as well as resort dwellings? Or are they two separate items, resort dwellings versus overnight accommodation?
Our, it's, it's a little bit of both, because like in, in our R3, you can technically do overnight or day-to-day rentals. So it's, if you look in our code and the definition, it's, it's for like hotel, hotel use where you have your lobby and that type of construction. And that might be something, that's something that we've struggled with internally of, like our, our definition section really needs to be updated. But just like you saw earlier tonight with structures, it's, it's, a lot of it's all over the place. But then, looking at our definitions, you, you also have to look through the code and where that could change, as we use, we resort to definitions all the time. But it's the definitions with, it's hotel use, motel.
So when, when you talk about density, and hotels are generally defined by density, units an acre. If it's overnight accommodation, I can understand 40 units an acre. But when it comes to resort, because typically resort means much bigger units than overnight accommodation. And overnight accommodation typically should be maybe 800 square feet or so, but resort can be as big as you want to. So, so when it comes to density, you want to be careful, you know, are we allowing 40 units an acre for overnight accommodation? Or are we allowing for resort dwellings or both? I think resort dwelling units should be less per acre than overnight accommodation.
One, one thing Ford Penellas has suggested us to do is to adopt their definitions that they use in their countywide rules, where they have separated out the term vacation rental for like a condo unit or some sort of residential unit that's rented out nightly versus temporary lodging, which is a hotel room or motel room. And that's how they have it defined in, in the countywide rules. It seems like other comp plans, from what I've noticed, have shifted more to using their definitions to make things more consistent and avoid these issues that, that we're facing currently.
Yes, but, but still, the question remains density, the units an acre. Do you allow 40 units an acre for resort dwellings?
I mean, if there are nightly hotel rooms and it's 40 units an acre, didn't we remove the square footage limit on hotel rooms in our code?
Yes, we don't have any square footage limitation in our, in our definition section.
But you're managing that with FAR?
Currently, yes.
Okay, so that's how you keep the units?
Something that could go back into the definition section as well.
And remember, for the alternative temporary lodging use standards, we'd have to include parking garage within that, so.
And that's in the county, countywide rules is, when you use this alternative temporary lodging use standards, you must include the garage. Typically, when, when we're looking at our floor area ratio and calculating that locally, we don't include garages. Let's not include.
Most places don't include garages for FAR as a part of your FAR.
But when you use these alternative temporary lodging use standards, the county says you must count.
Really?
Yes. So that's a little odd as well in trying to figure out what, what we allow.
It's the only part of their, their countywide rules that requires that. I've talked, I've talked with their principal planner to ask why that one, and that's like the one place where it is. It's the strangest thing, but that, that's what it is.
So if you were to build, let's say, two levels of garage and the property is, let's say, an acre, and your FAR is two, so you.
That garage is going to eat up a lot of the FAR.
Yes, so that's not.
Exactly.
Yeah, so that's not going to go well with, with the definition and the use. Now, I think we discussed here as far as, you know, where do you draw the line as far as, are we trying to please the, the businesses? Are we trying to please the residences, residents? I think we're trying to please both, because the businesses bring tax dollars and tax dollars will basically reduce the property taxes and they provide, you know, places for residents to go. So a, a good balance between the two, I think, is very, very important. So when, when we try to define FAR and units per acre, we really need to be careful. We, we don't want to hurt our businesses just because, you know, I, I don't, I don't necessarily accept and believe what, I'm sorry to say it, but, you know, if the county's imposing certain rules on us, I, I don't think we, we should, you know, we should accept it. I mean, we're doing projects, we're doing projects all over the place, including, let's say, Clearwater, and we're building parking garages and it's never a part of FAR.
And it's not a part, when, when we look at, at plans, we don't include the garage as well. But just using this alternative temporary lodging use standards with the county, that's the only time that they say you have to use it. So we, we wouldn't, we wouldn't calculate the garage unless if somebody is coming through with the development agreement and using this, this bonus, basically.
One, one idea we've been thinking about, because the county allows it, would be so for the by right to not count the units per acre to the floor area and, and separate the floor area ratio out as non-residential use. So one of the things that's kind of a challenge with the way, by counting the FAR in units per acre, is it's very tough to do anything mixed use along Gulf Boulevard, because you end up.
You have to have the .55 FAR.
Yeah.
And so having a mixed use building is, you can't really do that. It would be difficult.
It seems like from talking with residents over the last couple, it seems like people are more concerned about height. And the thing is, this doesn't change the height limits. This allows you to build higher, higher quality buildings within that height limit, because you'd be able to have a ni- nice retail and restaurants on the ground floor and condos or, or hotel rooms above it, within the height limit.
The height is measured from design flood elevation.
That's correct.
Is that like two feet above?
We're four.
Four feet above BFE?
Yes.
Four feet?
I think we're one of the highest.
That's pretty good for insurance rating.
Yep.
But it also allows for higher height. Any more discussion or questions?
I had a question on the commercial piece. Well, and then I have another question about the development agreement piece. So the commercial, we're going down to .55, right? That's everything that's, that's, in our map, that's everything on the east side of Gulf Boulevard, right?
Yes.
Okay. Is that gonna?
Create new.
Cause a lot of non-compliance? Or have y'all looked at, like how, what, what that would affect?
Andrew's looked at.
If we separate out the residential units and hotel units from.
Then we don't.
Then it's not an issue.
Okay.
The only area that is an issue is down in Johns Pass Village.
But that's kind of on the table.
With the activity center.
We're in a weird spot with that, it seems like, just like.
That's really the only, that's the only area that wouldn't be conforming with that .55. If, if we don't count any residential.
So do we need to have the activity center move through before we were, like?
No, we.
Before you approve the?
No, no.
Okay. Or change this piece?
We're not changing any, anything with the map. We're just clarifying, cleaning up.
Okay. Yeah, interesting.
Johns Pass is really the only place where you get that multi-story commercial, where you'll have the higher FAR commercial. Most, most of the other ones, like, like, there's one where the, it's the coffee place, what is it, Sweet Brunettes? Where you have the commercial on the ground and, and the units above it. So that's like an example of, like, by fixing these policies, you have the commercial, so the .55 would be the commercial on the ground and then the units above wouldn't count towards that. But it allows you to better utilize the property within the height limits and, and higher quality mixed use development.
Yeah, I mean, personally, I hate the idea that we have to go back to .55 for all commercial. It's pretty brutal. That's like all the ugliest buildings possible. Like half parking lot and half a building, right? I mean, it's, it's basically what, what it becomes.
But then you'd still be able to have units above it, though, so it.
So currently, if we were just to adopt that .55, you would have to have your commercial and all your units within that .55.
Right.
Doesn't work.
Yeah. Hmm, okay. And then, so the one thing that I'm trying to understand is we can be more restrictive than the countywide plan. So our development agreement clauses, or whatever we want to call it, is that tech, does that technically create it to where that is more restrictive, even if we're at a higher?
The county requires, like, if, if we, through this alternative temporary lodging use standards, you must get a development agreement to use this. And the county has in their development agreements, through this alternative temporary lodging use standards, I think it's four or five different things that, that development agreement must include.
But that's just for temporary lodging?
Yes, that's if you want to go higher than, say, the, if you're on the west side of Gulf Boulevard, if you want to go higher than the 50, and we allow, say, 60 units per acre.
Oh, so we don't even have any, I guess, I was thinking that might affect other land use categories, but it doesn't, because we don't have development agreements for.
No, it's only with, it's only if it's, if you're using that temporary lodging.
Resort, because that's the only thing we have development agreements for, right? At this point? Or like clauses for that?
If you go through, if you rezone to PD, then you, you also have to go through the development agreement process. But this would be another thing that you would have to go for a development agreement.
That gives us some flexibility, but it, it's something that makes it more strict, right? But it's like.
So they're getting a higher density and intensity, or density with that development agreement.
Mm-hmm.
But they have to come and ask for it and get that approved through Planning Commission and it also goes to BOC.
Versus by right.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Which our by right is not, not really defined, because those numbers are higher. So, yeah, it would just be putting in the by rights and then, and then clarifying the development agreement process.
Do we have any comments from the audience?
Hello, everybody. Jim Ross Tech, my address is protected. Just a couple of comments. With the slides, I really think if you were to break it down to where you put on, in the same line item, maybe green for Madeira Beach and red for Penellas Forward versus top to bottom, I think it would make it more visually acceptable for people to understand it. This is my third time looking at this and it's like, it's starting to make sense just now. So I think that would go a very long way. If you could go back to the maps for a second, I, I saw an anomaly there. There appears to be a commercial general category up near the causeway all by itself. And I don't understand what that is. There's, there's a gray block. I don't know what it is. But it's like out of the ordinary for me.
Hi.
Publix?
I think there's like a.
Is, is that what it is, the Bank of America?
On the inland side or, oh, on Gulf Boulevard, there's a parcel of Bank of America that's like a commercial general. It's the one commercial general property.
Oh, you're talking about right here?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, because I'm, I'm sure we're gonna get questions on that. It's like, it just, it looks out of place and people are gonna ask, why is that commercial general? Why not where the Daiquiri Shack is? Or I guess the car wash?
That's all in.
That's all the same property? Oh, is it?
No. Those are two separate.
So, so the Daiquiri Shack is in the town center and has the future land use of planned redevelopment mixed use. I think previous. I think previously, it probably was commercial general before the land use was changed.
But now it's, see, it's in that blue, the planned redevelopment mixed use.
The Bank of America wasn't included in that.
And then just two other comments. Number one, I see the commercial general, they're, the people are going to be asking for, what is the definition of it? It's not in that packet of what the definition actually is from what I can see. So they're going to ask. So that's, that, that's good that they're going to ask, and, uh, what other question?
Also, you got Church by the Sea up there is blue.
And the one thing that Ms. Rowan had spoke about, that R1 and R2 weren't going to be touched. I had a resident contact me, and it looked like, and maybe it was the color coding on their computer, that R2 was being changed to R3. Be prepared for that question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Is any other public comment? So this doesn't go to vote, it just passes on to the next area?
No vote, because it's a discussion.
Okay, so at this point, we're at the Planning Commission discussion. Does anybody have anything they want to discuss or possibly bring up next month, other than the, this, number four? Yes?
I think we're all proud of our city. It's a wonderful, wonderful city. But when you drive towards our city, you don't really see, you know, welcome to Madera Beach signs or, you know, just a, a signage that defines that's the beginning of Madera Beach. So I kind of wanted to put that out there to maybe think about that sometime in the future. Maybe we can be looking to add a welcoming sign to tourists or, you know, and people that like to visit Madera Beach from three directions, north, south, and east.
I got one for you, Chuck, for next month. And I brought this up several times with the old board. As you drive across the Stewart Crossway, it looks like a bomb zone.
On the right side.
And I brought this up to the mayor previous that I think the building department has to, they have, Mr. Taff told me, they have a 20-year contract on that property. So they don't have to touch that. That's Florida state law. I went, I dug on this pretty good. And my recommendation back then was that if you're going to give a building permit and you're going to tear down something, and you're not going to build right away, put it back to grass. If that was all grass over there and the piles of dirt were removed, it would look a lot better. But when I brought this up six, eight months ago, all of a sudden, within that week, they got machines in there and they started doing something. I go, oh, good, they're going to build. They went in there, placated me or us, and it's right back to the same thing. It looks like hell. It's open sand that blows across the bridge and all the way down there when the wind is right. Everybody's getting their car sandblasted if you go across that. And that's what I mean by putting it back. If you're not, so my recommendation is that if we're going to give someone a building permit to tear down something, there's got to be a stipulation in that, that they have to execute or finish and seal it. Seal it up, seal the property, put it back naturally. If you're, want to wait 10, 15 years, that's fine. At least it's grass. At least it's not an eyesore, and that is an eyesore. And we have a beautiful community, you know, so. And it's terrible because that's the first thing you see when you come across the bridge. So I would like to propose that next month, we talk about that, put it on something and pass it up along the way, that something is done on, it doesn't matter where it is because now you go down next to Kitty. You have an open lot there, and we're right back to sand, and it looks like a bomb zone. And, and I don't think that is fair for anybody that pays taxes in the city of Madera Beach. And it's not fair for the employees either because, I mean, they have to look at it, they have to hear me complain about it. And it's just, you know, we did a great thing with the garbage cans, we cleaned up that. Well, let's clean up some more of this stuff. I mean, Megan is on the pocket parts. It's all great, but the big eyesores, it just has to go. And again, you know, I started with John before about all, cleaning up all the boats. We're getting a lot of boats again. And where are they coming from? And now we have a cab, you come across the bridge, you have a cabin cruiser with like three or four other boats behind a cabin cruiser. It just looks like hell. Thank you.
I agree with that completely, but now as to whether or not if we need to use it as a discussion, or do we talk to the city manager about it? Or where, where would that process start, please, Jenny?
I think the best process, just like Chuck mentioned, is discussing with the city manager or bringing it to BOC for discussion as a discussion item and having the BOC either kick it back to us or see where and what they could do. I think that would be the best way forward with that.
I heard a 20-year, I don't think I heard it right, but when will the building permit expire?
I am not sure. I do not have that.
I can remember going there when it was a restaurant. Okay?
Liver Rock?
So, but it's been down, I want to say probably close to 10 years, maybe eight years, somewhere in there.
It's been a while.
It's been a while.
It's been over 12. It's been down since I was here.
Well, I think they issued the permit, I'm going to say, four or five years ago, actually. Not that long ago. But I think maybe there's like four, maybe six years left, and it's all public record. We can find that out.
I believe it was in 15 when the permits were issued for it. 15 or 16, because it was right around the same time as the stuff on 150th with the two hotels, the three hotels. And the way I understand, they cleaned it up that time because supposedly they had a potential buyer.
You know, and I'm not sure if as a part of the issuance of that building permit, there were any stipulations related to managing and maintaining their property. I'm not sure. I think it'd be worth reading.
Well, but then also it could get into a thing of, of having to maintain your property. It's just like empty properties where they park. The sheriff can come in and give tickets, and then the citations, and then it goes in front of the magistrate, and then can be fined. Now, as to whether or not that can be the case here because it is a nuisance. And nuisance being that it's ugly and, and potentially in windy weather can be hazardous.
But if it's put in, if it's put into a building permit.
Well, but the only thing is, this is putting the cart before the horse. It's already.
I know, I know.
You know, and, and I hear you, but I, I think need to be looking to see where we can have some teeth to go after it at this point. So maintain your property. You know, it's just like, you know, if your grass grows taller than six inches, you can be fined. City can come out and level all of those things. But I mean, but I, I, I hear exactly what you're saying, but as to where we start this process, and we're dealing with all these codes, so maybe we need to put something in one of the codes that says, okay, so if you don't maintain your property, and like the one over by Kitty Stewart, well, yeah, they demoed that, and they were out this weekend with the U-Haul cleaning out the other building, which that'll probably be demoed quickly also. But I understand that that will not come in front of us because supposedly they're going to go by the existing guidelines of what, they're not going to need to do a PD because they're going to stay within the guidelines of what is in our codes right now.
I think if it was put in the building permit that if you didn't maintain or address that, that your permit would be pulled. That's the teeth in that. That solves that problem in the future.
Oh, absolutely.
But now we got to go back and figure out how we can get them to move on that.
Yes. We must have currently something in the, in the books that describes, you know, existing non-improved properties and how they should be maintained. I, I think we should have something under books.
You would think.
Yeah.
Yes, that would be in code enforcement, and we don't, we don't really deal with, with that. That's more of a building, building issue in, in code enforcement. Say, like, with, with grass, say, if the grass is overgrown, issues like that, that could potentially fall with under that, that section.
But, but do we have?
But I'm not, I'm not up to, I, I would have to do some research and tell you what that is.
Yeah, in your books. See if there's any regulation that describes maintenance of your property.
Okay, so with that in mind, can we include that in our next month's meeting? That we're a discussion about vacant, vacant, well, unmaintained properties?
Yes.
A Level Rock?
It's not only them, it's everybody that does some kind of construction.
Well, but you're going to get a little pushback because they'll say, well, permits. It's taken months for permits, which.
It, it's like, they start a $2 million house and they take two years to build it. What? Excuse me? Two years?
We could bring, we could look at the code and bring that next.
Everybody in that neighborhood has to watch this and listen to this. It's just not, it's not fair.
We can look through the code and bring all the sections, and we can have a discussion next, next meeting.
Beautiful.
And then I would, I would also suggest bringing it up to the BOC at a BOC workshop or a regular meeting, which is also very helpful.
Well, I think if we start it here, that'll get the ball rolling and get it ahead of them so that we can have some more definitions to present to them. Okay, any other discussion?
I had a question about the upcoming, the scheduling of the, uh, land use workshops and things. Did we?
Yes.
It said it was different. What were, what are the dates?
I just had the presentation that we had for BOC up. But in your, in your packet.
Oh, okay.
And we have a workshop on Saturday, the 17th of, of June.
Okay.
And then we are hoping to bring that to, back to BOC on the 28th, and that is their BOC workshop to just discuss what was discussed tonight as well as on that meeting on the 17th.
Okay.
No further discussion?
If I may, may, over this side. Sorry. Just want to jump back to what you were talking about a minute ago. I was just looking at your governing documents, and I don't know that you can start that conversation you want to start. I think it needs to go to the BOC first for them to ask you to have that conversation. The, the governing information says that you're to consider requests, and I may be wrong where the, where the information lies within your code, so you all please direct me, correct me if I'm incorrect, but it says that you're to consider all requests for amendments to the comprehensive plan, land use plan map, amendments to the Land Development Regulation, and the zoning, official zoning map, and other matters as may be specifically requested by the Board of Commissioners. So I think it sounds like what you want to talk about is something that's not within those specified areas. Again, correct me if I'm wrong. And so you need to go have the BOC direct you to spend their time and the money involved in that to see if that's something they're interested in and having you guys discuss.
Okay, thank you. So I understand, so that could be done in the BOC workshop?
Or a regular meeting when they have the open public comment at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, so it would be brought up at that point?
Yes.
Okay.
And then BOC could direct staff to then review, and then we would bring it to Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you. So we've got to make sure somebody goes to the workshop or the next meeting and bring it up. But then, okay, so if it's brought up at the first, that's just open comments? So then from the open comments, the committee would say, yes, that's a good idea?
What, what we could probably streamline is I can, I can talk to the city manager and let him know your concerns tonight were expressed and have him move it forward if he feels it's the proper thing to do in that, in that manner versus one of you having to show up a public comment and try to start the conversation. I think that might streamline it if I'll just talk to, to the city manager or have Mr. Taff talk to him and see what method he would like to move it forward.
Well, we also have somebody of importance here right now that could bring it up.
That, too.
Okay, so if, if that ends our.
I will, I will send an email to the city manager tomorrow, just so that's clear. I'll, I'll send something to the city manager.
Thank you, Jenny.
Discussion, you're welcome.
Okay, so then the next meeting is July 10th at 6 o'clock. Unlike the 3rd. And then informational materials.
There's nothing.
Okay. So with that, we're adjourned at 7:47.